Okay, we are live.
Okay, we are reconvening to open session at 6:44. We have a period here for public comment during which people, members of the public are welcome to comment on items that are not on the agenda tonight. Is there anyone here for public comment? Thank you for that. I'll save my public comments for some other time. Moving on to the consent items. Item G, meeting minutes. The action is to consider the approval of the meeting minutes from the regular board meeting on May 10th. Looking for a motion? Okay, we did want to discuss.
Wait, I'm sorry. I did something to this. Oh, I think there. No. I lost Sarah on.
I can still hear you.
Oh, that's good.
I had muted myself, but I can hear you.
Okay, good. Okay, okay. So that's good. I'm sorry. You were on.
That's all right. I'm just going to go ahead and call. I'm just going to do these two consent items separately because we have some discussion on the second one. So the meeting minutes, looking for a motion to consider the approval of the meeting minutes from the regular board meeting on May 10th.
So moved.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Moving on to G2, human resources. Looking for a motion to consider the approval for the 2021-2022 Personal Personnel Action Report 14. Looking for a motion? Looking for a second discussion?
Okay, so I'm pulling this because of two reasons. So first, I want to call attention to, under the certificated listing, there is a person listed there, Tanya Howard Gibbon. She contacted me today and has made the determination that she's going to stay with her current school district and not take our offer. And so we need to pull her from the agenda.
Okay.
And the good news to share with the folks is that we actually have a teacher kind of in the wings that has already gone through the whole interview process. I called her today to let her know that we'd be offering her and she'll be coming forward at the June 14th meeting.
Great.
That's good news. And then the second reason I'd like to call attention to this personal action is because I would like to ask Maria Martin to please go up to the podium to be acknowledged. So as those that were with us earlier in the recognition, there is some transition, transitioning happening over at Basic School. And we went through a pretty rigorous process of searching for our next school principal. And Maria Martin, who is a longtime teacher at Basic School, was chosen to be the principal-elect for Basic. And I am absolutely thrilled to bring Maria into this leadership role. She was one of the very first teachers I actually think I got to meet. I don't know if she remembers this, but we had a Zoom call there. For whatever reason, it was before I was officially in my role. I was connected to Maria about some, you know, stuff happening over at the site. And what moved me about our conversation is she was centered on talking about kids and about the way in which we address children. And she specifically talked to me about the importance of knowing kids' names and really helping them be seen. And that piece of Maria's student-centered focus came across so very clear to the interview committee and panel. And it was a rigorous process, a very, very rigorous process. Maria went through a variety of opportunities to show the skill set she has to take on this role. And it's a challenging job, but she's up for the challenge. And I feel so grateful to have her join our administrative team. So congratulations, Maria.
Thank you. Thank you, Raquel. Thank you to the board. I wrote a little something, so I'll just get through some of it. So I'm really grateful for this opportunity. And I've received such a warm welcome from parents, teachers, even the students at school. Like, as a fourth grade teacher, you don't always know the younger ones. You know, when I was a kindergarten teacher, I knew all the kids because as a kindergarten teacher, you get to know all the kindergartners and then they go through. And so I just knew everybody. And so when I made that transition, I still had some, you know, some classes coming through that I still knew. But the last several years, I really just know the fourth graders and especially my fourth graders. So over the last couple of weeks since this announcement was made, it's like they're coming out of the window. They're like, Ms. Martin, hi, Ms. Martin, you know. So their warm reception of the students has been the most meaningful to me. I've gotten great feedback and warm reception from staff and parents as well. But it's the students. It was, it's like, okay, good. They're happy. You know, they're not disappointed that you made this choice. So that stood out to me a lot. And I am, I'm ready to roll up my sleeves and get to work. You have my word that I will always work with integrity and with the best interest of our students at the forefront of everything that I do. I'm eager to partner with the parent community. I feel so fortunate that we have such a talented and committed parent body and who have great ideas and different perspectives and experiences to bring. So I'm thrilled that they come wrapped up in a package for me already as I enter into this role. And of course, I couldn't ask for a better staff. They work tirelessly every day for the benefit of our students. And they, they never are satisfied with, we're good. We don't need to do anything more. They're always striving for improvement and how can we get better? So I just couldn't ask for a better staff to, to get to work with. Over the past few weeks, people have asked, many people have asked me if I think I'll miss the classroom. And this was something I thought a lot about before deciding to apply for this position and pursue this path because I love the classroom and I love the connections that I get to make with the kids. But as I thought about it, I thought, well, I'm stepping out of room 34th grade, but I'm stepping into a classroom that has over 500 students in TK through four. So I just see it as a bigger classroom. So I don't feel like I'm giving that classroom piece up. And I hope to emulate some of our enrichment teachers and get to know all of their names and a little bit more something about each one of them because that's really important to me. I'd like to give a special thanks to my family. My husband and daughter are here for their love and support and for always believing in me. And a few years ago, my, my son Zach said to me, he said, Mom, you'd be a really good principal. You'd make a really good principal. You really should think about it. And so I just hope that I live up to that and that I step into his vision of me as a principal. And finally, I was thinking about a former student, Nico, who is now in sixth grade, who I saw recently. I saw him at the event where International Families Day. And he saw me and he gave me a huge smile and a really powerful high five. And he says, Ms. Martin, he's like, principal, let's go! So I leave you with Nico's words. Thank you very much, and I look forward to working with all of you and, and you guys as well. I couldn't ask for a better team to step into.
Well, Maria, on behalf of the board, let me add our warm welcome, and we look forward to working with you in your new role. It's going to be great. Thank you. And I'd like to thank Raquel and her entire staff for running such a robust process on the teacher side as well as on the administration side.
So just one last thing I want to say is for those that are listening and will send out a Parents for a Post in the newsletter. We are having a very informal meet and greet tomorrow with Maria at the Basic School Library at 4:30. It is Adelson's birthday. I know, I'm aware. And so they have reservations in the city. I'll stay behind and answer questions from parents about fall planning over at Basic School. And then Maria and I also talked about the opportunity at the start of the school year to have a more formal welcome where we typically have done a new family welcome, but maybe do it more all Basic families. So she can really speak to her vision for Basic School and what she anticipates that to look like. So just for all to know, this is very informal, short and sweet, but then another opportunity once we come back after this. Congratulations again, Maria. Congratulations, Adelson. Congratulations, Isabel. So, okay.
Okay, looking for a vote on G2A, the approval of 21-22 Personnel Action Report 14 has adjusted for that one higher. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The action report is approved, is accepted with that one revision. So now superintendent and staff reports, Raquel, district updates.
Okay, so I, if you recall, we had our, we had a meeting on May 10th. So this is a very, very short update related to what's going on. And I'm going to try to pull up my slide deck. Really what I wanted to touch on was enrollment. And so I actually don't need a slide deck to touch on this. And then I'll ask the principals to come up specifically to speak about end of year events and activities. But the one thing I wanted to speak to is enrollment. When I was last in front of you all, we had 91 kindergartners registered. We are now at 98. So we're very close to 100 kindergartners being enrolled. And so that is looking like a pretty big class size. So just for folks to know, later today, you're going to have the public hearing related to the budget. And we did build, build in if we need to hire another teacher. And so that is there. So it's looking more like we will need to be moving that forward. So I just wanted you to all have a heads up that we're closely monitoring enrollment. The other grade level that I'm hearing feedback on is specifically second grade. I've received a couple emails from parents and community members. I'm in communication with staff. And we are looking at, I want to say it's 103 students that we're anticipating for next school year. We've got some new students coming into the school district. And then the third grade level that we're looking closely at is fifth grade at Kent. So currently, we have six fourth grade classes that are rolling into fifth grade, and we're only planning for five classes. So I'm just giving the board the heads up on that in that we, we did budget in a way that would give us some flexibility if we needed to hire additional staff over the summertime. And so I just wanted people to have that heads up. So that's my big update that I wanted to provide. Answer any questions, and then I'll hand it over to the principals.
Sorry, did you say the budget was already available for the extra hire for kindergarten potentially? But looking at second grade and then sixth grade, those are also sort of built in.
Yeah, so we built in at least two new FTE. Yeah, in anticipation because what's happened the last couple of years, if you recall, we, we tend to hire somebody and it's not built into the budget.
Right.
And so we purposely did that this year. And so you can look at where we're ending fund balance, and you'll see that later in the presentation. But, but those are built in. So that's good news. All right, so.
So to be clear, the budget we'll see has two FTE additional. Okay.
Okay, with that said, Mary Ann, you want to go first to give an update on end of year activities?
I'm glad Maria hasn't skipped out yet. I know you're not, you're like, when did we slip out? But I just wanted to say, you know, being somewhere as a site principal for just a couple of years and then leaving, there's some guilt involved because now the school has to transition again. You know, I think of like just the office staff and like, oh my gosh, I gotta train another principal. And that's how they feel. It's just, it's a lot of work for a school to have those transitions. And I just, as soon as Maria was selected, I was like, oh my God, that feels so good. Because there's someone I knew, and I knew she'll be wonderful, and she knows the school. And I just, you know, I know it's not about me, but I feel less guilty now. So thank you. So I'm just so happy for Maria. And I think she'll be great. Okay, so end of the year activities at Basic. Let's see, coming, well, we've had some of the kick parties already from the auction, and there's still more to come. I got to do my, I had a lunch with five students and did some planting in the garden, and that was really fun. And so those are all still happening. I think first, first grade's done there, second grade. I think you told me fourth grade was coming up. So that's just fun. The tide hits after school, and they're fun little activities. Teachers right now are in the midst of a lot of assessing. There's CAS, there's MAP, there's FMPs, which are reading assessments. So every single student in the school will have a one-on-one reading opportunity with their teacher. Or so we get subs. Teachers try to do it during, you know, anytime they can during the day when kids are working independently. Anyway, they can get it done. They get it done. And then there's report card writing, starting tomorrow and the next Wednesday. So it's just right here at the end of the year. There's a kind of, we're right in the middle of all those things. However, there's a lot of fun things happening too. Days are packed for teachers. We just had Gold Country on Monday, fourth grade. And that was all day. And that was, I think, just, you know, it sounds like it was a wonderful day. And our last assembly is this Friday. We'll review all of our character pillars. I think there'll be a Basic Bear sighting. And also we'll have the Peacemaker team members do a little review of the character pillars. That's been a great program that our counselor started, Basic Peacemaker Team. And so third and fourth grade students, or is it just fourth grade? Just fourth, fourth grade students are out during recess with vests on and armed with Basic Bear cards and, you know, supporting students. And it's, it's pretty cute. And they're doing a great job. They go to the kindergarten yard too. And so they'll help us out with that. There's like 45 of them because it became very popular. We have three more Fridays, so three more dance parties. Very excited about that. We have Step Up Day for fourth grade on June 1st. That same day is the first day of Pride Month. And we have, we have curriculum for Pride Month for that little bit of time that we have June till June 10th. We have our volunteer tea next Friday, and we're excited about that. We'll honor all the parent volunteers. And ultimately, we had quite a few parent volunteers at Basic this year. In the end, you know, in the beginning, it was like this whole slow roll. But now we've had, of course, we have the car line and the lunch, which is a lot of people. But we've had mystery readers, and we've had Art for Bears, and we've had people doing centers. And we've had like one-time things. We're like, oh, this is a fourth grade, I think, that wrapping activity thing they did. And, you know, they needed a couple people. And we just recently had some chaperones and so things like that. So we ended up having a lot of parent volunteers ultimately. So that'll be nice. The last week of school, we have tons of trips planned to go to Creekside Park. And I think that's just another tradition that I wasn't aware of. But several grade levels, I think K1, 2, I'll plan some sort of like a grade level kind of field day kind of thing. Or so it's just going somewhere else and having just 45 minutes or an hour, but they do it together. Buddy groups headed over there, you know. And so that's kind of fun. So those are all planned kind of the last week of school. We have our Basic Step Up Day where we have first grade go to second, second go to third, third go to fourth, fourth go down to kinder, which is kind of cute. And they all just spend a few, you know, maybe less than half an hour in a classroom with some activities like seeing what here's what a second grade classroom looks like. And a second grade teacher, you know, talks to them and does activities. So that's kind of fun. The fourth grade pool party is the last week of school. That sounds like it's going to be great. We have one last site council meeting. We're right in the middle of a site council vote. Hopefully we get, we just need one more, one site council member. We've had a lot of new ones this year. And so that's the Monday of the last week of school. And then, of course, we have promotion the last day of school, and it's at 8:30. Mark your calendars. We are going to be outside again, just with the uptick of everything and being in the community center, it sounded like too much too soon. And we want the whole school to be involved as they have done it before. So, but we don't have to be like spread out on the field. We'll, we'll be closer together. So we're kind of working on spacing and acoustics and kind of figuring out where the best place will be. But so parents can come. Of course, you guys are all invited, and then we'll have our students there too, which is always nice. So that is what's happening so far at the end of the year. There might, there may be more, but I think that's all I could remember. It's packed time, and it's just kind of a fun part of the year. So thank you.
Before Grant goes, can I just mention, go ahead and up there, Grant, I just want to say, I had the chance to go back to my roots and play classroom teacher yesterday on the fourth grade Gold Country trip. And it was, it was absolutely amazing. The kids, I think, overall had a fabulous time. Special thanks to our fourth grade teachers for coordinating all that, specifically our GLC teachers. But then it was actually all hands on decks. One person did the sweatshirt, one person did the bus, one person did the coordination with the, with the venue that we're at. But the kids, they were, they were so well behaved and respectful and engaged. It was pretty remarkable. And so I just wanted, Mary Ann mentioned Gold Country. And so I wanted to, to touch on that. And then, and then the very end was a like pizza social that we had for the kids. And so for whatever reason, I had this vision, like they would get off the bus and like nicely sit down and grab some pizza. So I had this whole vision, but in, but it did not work out that way. So they'd get off the bus. They were starving. And there were all, there was all this like, you know, dessert stuff and pizza and salads. And they all got to eat, and everybody got home safely. But it was like, it was pretty chaotic. But I was like, well, you know, they're all safe. We made it back. They're happy. And like, I don't think the kids, they were like, whatever, you know, we got pizza. We got, you know, like the dessert plates were full for sure. But it was pretty special. So, you know, special kudos to the team for making that happen. Mr. Alt House, you're on.
All right. Well, this is a pretty exciting year. I was making a list of, exciting time of year, rather. I'm making a list of all of the things coming up. And I'm thinking, do we even have this many days of school? Like, we're doubling up on some days. You know, end of year celebrations really started with the fifth grade, sixth grade games night and our seventh and eighth grade movie night. I'd like to again appreciate our KSBA PTA for support in both of those events. It was really great to see our kids back in a more kind of social setting on these events that have been longstanding tradition in our school district. And they were really celebratory events. Tomorrow, we have our Pops concert at Kent, which is another annual tradition where we bring the whole school together in celebration of some of the music that's been worked on throughout the course of this year. So we have our rock band that will be performing and some zero period, excuse me, ensembles as well as some of the instrumental music ensembles. That's all going to happen on the field tomorrow using the music tent as well as kind of the landing in front of the music room as the stage. And so we're really looking forward to celebrating our Kent musicians tomorrow at the Pops concert. On Thursday, we have our volunteer coffee in the morning. We had fewer volunteers than Basic this year, just given kind of the nature of the pandemic and what volunteerism typically looks like in middle school. So we're having a morning coffee event, but we're excited to have volunteers out here in front of the library plaza for some coffee and breakfast treats and just to celebrate the really important role that our, our parent volunteers play in our community. On Friday, we have another coffee, and this will be the final principal coffee of the year. Wendy and I are really looking forward to this one. This will be our opportunity to introduce the concept of standards-based feedback and grading to our community. We have Shannon Janney, who's our English Language Arts Department Chair, as well as Jill Fiemo, who's our Math Department Chair. Two teachers that have really been instrumental in leading this work among our faculty as well as piloting many of the components that will be transitioning into next year in our English and math departments respectively. So we're really thrilled to be partnered with some teacher leaders to help us communicate really a 21st century vision for feedback and grading for our students. And I'm excited to introduce that to our community and certainly expecting that there's, will be questions and, and kind of a learning curve for us all. But I think a really great opportunity to kind of set the stage for what promises to be an important year in transition to that style of feedback going into next year. So that's the principal's copy this Friday. Certainly encourage anybody who's able to attend, we'll be sure to, to record it as we typically do for, for viewing later if people are not able to attend. And then after the Memorial Day weekend, we launch right back into it next week with a series of three music concerts. On Tuesday night, the 31st, we have our fifth graders. So the fifth grade band and the fifth grade strings will perform for, for all of us. On Wednesday night, we have sixth grade band and sixth grade strings. That'll be a really interesting juxtaposition because for people who understand our music program, fifth graders have music twice a week. Sixth graders have music four times a week. For the first time in the history of music at Kent Middle School, it was a full beginning program this year because the, the current sixth graders didn't have instrumental music last year because of the pandemic. So it's been really fascinating to be in the fifth grade versus sixth grade experiences, to see the difference between two days a week and four days a week. One year's further growth and development of the students. And so it's, it's an interesting juxtaposition. So that should be a great series of concerts, Tuesday, Wednesday. And then Thursday, our zero period ensembles bring it home. So that's our band and jazz band and choir that will be performing on, on Thursday night next week. As Mary Ann mentioned, we welcome our newest Falcons to Kent on Wednesday, June 4th, June 1st, rather, for fourth to fifth grade Step Up Day. Last year, we had classes come one at a time. This year, we're welcoming all six fourth grade classes together for classroom presentation in our fifth grade classrooms with some students and teachers as well as a tour of the campus and a spirit rally to get the kids excited about the houses that they're joining and some Kent Falcon lure around the campus. I think fierce, the Falcon will make an appearance. And hopefully, if with any luck, we'll let the fourth graders be heading back to Basic full of that Kent spirit that will guide them into the start of the 2022-23 school year as the youngest Kent Falcons at our school. We will continue with a Step Up Day for Step Up Presentation for incoming fourth grade parents to kind of share the more adult version of the information we shared with students and helping parents anticipate that all-important transition to middle school as well. We have a first-ever Kent Middle School Pride Day. I was excited to hear you mention Pride Month as well. And so we have segments planned, starting June 1st with a broadcast where we celebrate heroes of the LGBTQ+ movement each day on the broadcast. And then Friday, June 3rd, we're going to have the first-ever Pride Day at Kent. We have a GSA club this year that is working to coordinate that event, partnering with a representative from the Spar Center. So it's really been a fantastic student-driven organization and will be a celebration that, that second-to-last Friday of the school year. And then going into the last week, end of year field trips are back. And I'm so excited to share that our fifth graders will be going to College Marin for their annual swim party. Our sixth graders will also be going to College Marin for their annual swim party. Our seventh graders will be going to McNair's Beach for their annual beach trip. And our eighth graders will be going to Six Flags for their annual grad trip. So the last week of school, school is still in session, I promise, on all of those days. And, but there's a lot of exciting things happening as the kids get to anticipate and experience those trips together. And then in conclusion, I'd say beyond the grad trip, our eighth graders have a whole grad week planned for that last week, which includes the graduation trip. It includes a traditional breakfast and walk to Basic Elementary School to be appreciated by some former teachers and the current students there, as well as a slideshow and a breakfast. We have three graduation practices across that week, leading to the big finale, which will be Friday, June 10th at 2:30 PM on the Kent Field, same location, little different timing as, as last year. But promises to be just as glorious an event as we celebrate our graduating eighth graders as they leave the Kent Field School District and go on to high school. And I'm pleased to share that they will also have a traditional grad night that night. It's a glow dance party. So lots of fluorescent colors and lights and all the things and music. And they're really excited for that traditional grad night. So with only 12 days of school left, there's a lot of things I just listed. I'm sure we can fit it all in, and it's going to be a really exciting time. So happy to answer any questions people may have.
I just wanted to express appreciation to both Mary Ann and to Grant for really, and your whole teams. I know this monumental efforts to put all of these traditions back into play. And I know that it is so well-appreciated across our community. And I think it brings so much joy, not just to the students, obviously, who get to participate in them, but I think also for the families that I think we all can appreciate over the last couple of years. These are the moments and the things I think that we all miss so much. To see them come back with such vibrancy is just, it's hard to, so thank you for that.
Thank you for saying that. I will just take that opportunity to say, it really takes a village to pull these events off. And it's been, it's been a difficult and complicated year this year. And yet we've had a real consensus among the staff and the parents to say, we can do this for our kids, even with this current COVID situation that we're navigating right now. We can do this, and we can do it safely, and we want to do it for the kids. So all of the teachers that are contributing to this numeral events and all of the planning on top of what they're already doing, instruction in the classroom, all of the parents that are coordinating and finding lifeguards and, you know, donating to a variety of things to just help make this happen for, for kids. And then for your support, you know, as our school board as well, we really appreciate it. So it's going to be a fantastic spring.
Thank you, Grant. So moving on to our finance presentation, Raquel, I think that's back to you.
Yes, okay, so. And I'm going to put this up there. And we will start with the LCAP presentation. And then I will present our budget presentation. So further on in the agenda, you'll see items J, I'm sorry, items I and J, those speak to specifically the public hearing. So we're required per education code to hold a public hearing for our LCAP and also to do that in alignment with our annual budget. So what I'm presenting to you right now is the LCAP, our Local Control Accountability Plan. right now is the LCAP, our Local Control Accountability Plan. That's in alignment with the strategic plan that the board adopted in February of 2020. And so, the one thing I'll say I'm actually pretty proud of is that hopefully some of what you hear today is not like, it's pretty familiar. I, you hear us talking about it a lot. One of the things that I really set out this year was to try to keep visuals the same, try to maintain, you know, if you'll call it the elevator speech related to our focus as a school district and really keep that, um, on the forefront as we plan for the school year. So, I'm going to start with speaking to our stakeholder engagement. And so this year we had our LCAP Strategic Plan Advisory Group. You'll see names of folks there, parents and staff that participated and we met, um, we actually, I had anticipated we'd start meeting before the new year, uh, like in the fall time, we actually postponed one of our meetings. We had the subcommittee come together in December and talk a bit about our LCAP and kind of plans for the springtime and planning for the next year's LCAP. And so we met monthly beginning in January with the LCAP advisory and then we brought board updates. We focused, we identified a focus goal as a board. The board really wanted to focus on goal number one that I'll touch on in a moment. But, um, through a variety of board updates, LCAP advisory, talking with staff, KSPTA and D-LAC meetings, parent partners, Virginia did a great presentation, the special ed parent partners, and then our youth truth survey. We really utilized those as key elements to help give us feedback to feed into the LCAP. And just also to note that this is an evolving plan. So it's always in draft form because there's feedback we get that will change, that we may change. One of the things that the principals will be bringing forward in June will be the school site plans. And so they were still, you know, working on that and that should also feed into our LCAP. So there may be some adjustments that we make when we bring this back in the fall as well. So, I'll just remind us of this slide that I've used throughout the course of this school year and just acknowledging the core beliefs of our school district. Celebrating the diversity. If you were here, um, I think it was last week, just last week where we had International Families Day and honored our students that were being, um, reclassified as proficient language learners in, in the English language. It was a pretty special night. I think Annie, there were 250, is that what you said? 250 attendees. I think it's a new tradition for the Kent School District to celebrate that evening and the community coming out and acknowledging these young people. There were eight students that were honored and for what they were able to accomplish. And so it was just another symbol of the diversity of our community and all the special international foods that were shared. Um, and I left, my cheeks were hurting because I was smiling so big, but, um, it was a really special, special night. So, so that just again, uh, an example of what we can do as a community. This notion of inspiring, um, our teachers, inspiring our students, inspiring our parents related to what a special place this school district is. Earlier today, we spent four, five, I'd say two hours honoring staff and acknowledging the special gifts that they bring and the magic that makes up this school district. And so we want to keep that happening. Um, I'll take a, a line from Grant Alt House, the through lines, right? That through line of inspiration and how very important it is because people will step up and do whatever it takes when they feel that they're in a place that inspires them and it's joyful to be a part of. And last but not least, the connections. And one of the things you'll hear me speak to a bit more is as we go into next school year, we're going to maintain goal number one as our focus on every learner. But also really expanding on the connections in the community and the partnership. Um, as I mentioned last week, when we celebrated International Families Day, that, that was symbolic of the connection and how we can lean on our families. But even yesterday's Gold Country and showing up at Basij and having the parents serving the pizza and bringing all the treats. There, they are hungry to volunteer and be a part of what we get to do with their children, quite frankly. And so I'm looking forward to continuing to engage in that process. You heard Grant mention all of the celebrations in the coming week, um, happening over at Kent and Mary Ann. Also the idea of the whole school getting that opportunity to celebrate the fourth graders as they promote. So looking forward to that piece. So our four goals stay the same. Um, the focus on every learner, supporting our staff with professional, professional development, but also compensation and keeping our people here. Because people, as you heard, I think it was Tim Lantini who said, people stay for a long time and it's because they enjoy working here and they are valued people. And so, um, I think it's really important that we continue to honor our staff by providing them professional development and, you know, compensating them in a way that they enjoy it here. The fiscal solvency, that leads right into, you'll hear in a bit about our budget and where we're at. The board, uh, has been very clear with me about the importance of building up our reserve and that is a goal. It's going to take some time, but we're heading in the right direction and that's good news. We started the subcommittee, um, the financial advisory subcommittee that I think we have one more meeting that we're going to be holding. If I recall correctly, um, but really trying to focus on that, building that reserve. And last but not least, as I mentioned before, community and the importance of community and those connections. And I will say, um, that was the only goal that we edited. We didn't change it significantly. We just felt it was quite wordy and so we revised it a bit. So you'll see that in a moment. So setting direction and priorities for, um, next year and beyond. Remember the LCAP or I'll remind folks that LCAP is a three-year plan. It's an evergearing plan. So it's to build upon itself. As I mentioned, goal number one was our focus this school year. And so next year I'm proposing that we focus on goal number four, which is around community while maintaining all the goals. So here are the four goals listed. Goal number one, engage, support and challenge all students with an intention to eliminate the opportunity gap. You've heard me say this, but I want to acknowledge it again tonight. I think it was, was it May or April? Maybe it was May. Maybe, no, it was April. It was April when our, um, site administration presented more detail and specificity related to all of the work that's happened specifically around our students that are, are having more struggles and needing the focus on interventions. And so I think the next piece that came up through the LCAP Advisory Group and through feedback was the focus on differentiation and being sure that we're meeting the needs of all learners, even those that might need some more enhancement. And a way in which we talked about doing that, that you'll see on a, a future slide is specifically related to how we're embedding more student voice and choice in their, in their instruction. And it really connects to the cultural relevant teaching that we are so focused on and how we're making things real for kids. Goal number two is around the attack, not attack. Attract, retain and develop excellent, inspiring teachers and staff that hold the high expectations. And so this touches on that professional development I mentioned, but that retention is really, really important. It was really, you know, sad to see some of our perfect paraprofessionals step away, but also pretty proud of them and supporting them in their interest in wanting to become classroom teachers or expanding their education. So hopefully they'll come back, come back to us. Goal number, um, three is around the ba- balance budget and the importance of that. I'll, again, we'll highlight in just a little bit about our budget. And then goal number four was with the one we revised. So it was quite wordy. And so we just changed it a tad. Focusing still on providing a safe and inclusive education environment that would cultivate a culture of bold thinking. Those are key words that we wanted to maintain. That inspires our teachers and students and recognizes the importance of the community connections. So those are our four goals we're maintaining. You'll note there where I said we revised everything else stayed the same. Goal number one. So I'm just going to highlight two pieces here. I mentioned one already. One is related to our instructional approach. And, um, this aligns straight into the student voice and choice. And this is around engagement. And I really do think that as long as we continue our focus around the culturally relevant instruction, that that actually impacts every one of our children. No matter their background, because what you're doing is you're making their learning real and alive for them in a way in which they can connect to it. And so I'm very excited about our intention to continue our work with Marcus Moore, continue our work with Dr. Watson and quite frankly, leverage the expertise of our staff. We've got a pretty remarkable group of folks. The next piece I want to highlight here is around the progress monitoring and the formative assessment. And so you may have seen in the newsletter yesterday evening, Grant gave an outline about, um, sharing the map scores and some information related to that. So parents know, Mary Ann touched on that as well and that it will be shared through the report card timeframe for Basij, but the importance of the progress monitoring and utilizing the formative assessments to help guide instruction for kids. So, um, those are the two I'd like to highlight on goal one. Goal number two, oh, went too fast there. Goal number two is around the, uh, attract, retain and developing the excellent, inspiring teachers. And so again, I'll just note, note the investing in our staff. Investing in our staff with prevent professional development. Investing in them by offering them a competitive compensation package. But in the middle there too is around the inspiration and being present for them. You know, you heard today, um, I think it was, uh, to Heidi and Lisa and that notion of that check-in piece and that, you know, just getting that chance to really connect and people feel that they're part of a family. And that's quite special. And so really inspiring our staff being present for them, um, so that they want to stay here. The exit interviews will continue that. So folks that are leaving will get, um, follow-up from Patty Martinez, our HR administrator, to either do a live interview with her. There's a form that we have where they can complete information through, uh, a Google form. So, um, and then we put to the side the evaluation tool, but we'll be bringing that back next school year and look at that, um, with our KTA partners. Goal number three is around our finances and what, uh, maintaining a balanced budget, well-maintained facilities. We're pretty quite, we're quite lucky around our facilities. And I want to just mention that this summer, phase two of the air conditioning project, which I think we're really going to need, will be going into play. Um, we're also working on some new restrooms over at Basij School to support our transitional kindergarten program and other deferred maintenance projects that will be in play. But the, the one that I'm pretty proud of that we established this year was that Financial Advisory Subcommittee. And getting that chance to really roll up our sleeves and look at our budget a bit more closely. And so just acknowledging that we want a multi-year plan that's beyond the three years, not just the three years. Because we do know that we, we depend quite a bit on our personal tax and, um, and we'll, we'll touch on that later. So. And last is goal number four. And this goal, I'm going to read this one. Provide a safe and inclusive education environment to cultivate a culture of bold thinking that inspires teachers and students and recognizes community connections. And as I mentioned before, goal number one was really our focus this last school year. And my intention is to recommend the board that we focus on goal number four. And I, I feel like I've also got that feedback from our board and from our community. It's just how are we really leveraging the community connections to support what we have happening in our schools as partners? Um, we, we need to relook at our communication tools, the website, the newsletter. Increase opportunities for community engagement. We are working with a facilitator. If you recall, a community engagement facilitator, Ken Epstein, he actually was still meeting with folks last week. He and I think have a call this week. To launch further work that's a multi-year plan. It's going to take some time, but I'm looking forward to that. And, um, the, uh, this notion of belonging, and this is something that was brought up in our youth truth survey, but the importance of the belonging amongst our stakeholders. And when I say our stakeholders, I'm talking about our students, I'm talking about our staff, I'm talking about our parents and how we truly feel like we are part of the community here and that, is there ways in which we can have a common experience, um, that helps leverage? And so that's something actually that came up. I'm working with the Fall Task Force work group at Basij and they actually brought up this idea around some kind of experience, common experience that kids could have early on. That's away from school that allows them to build these deep connections. And so, there's been very preliminary conversations about seeing if we can make something like that happen for our children as well. And I think the, the last two I want to touch on is, um, the, the piece around the learner profile. And so Grant mentioned the work that he and Mary Ann and Wendy did over the summer around that learner profile, but the importance of bringing that more to the forefront. So we can make it more visible for our community. Um, and last but not least is our family liaison. And it is one that I think early next school year, we need to bring Yvette and I, I saw her earlier tonight, but, um, to come and speak to how this role has played out for her. How are we, you know, monitoring the effect of that program, um, and having a community family liaison? It feels like it's been good, but what's the data we're using to guide that? That decision because our plan is to maintain that, we're utilizing, continue to utilize restricted funds for that piece. So, um, those are our four key goals and, um, our next steps is the board will consider this LCAP for approval. Um, at the June 14th meeting, it will then go to the county office for review over the summertime. They then send us information to update and it comes back to you in the fall. We're anticipating, you'll hear me speak about this in a moment, a 45-day revision of our budget and that'll probably will be around the same time that we'll have some revisions to the LCAP. Um, and then during the course of the year, ongoing reflection review, how are we implementing our plan? As I mentioned, I think we're really focused on that goal number one this school year. I know it was something we focused on as an administrative team and it was, um, something that I kept bringing back at our board meetings as well. And so, continuing to maintain that with layering on that goal number four community next school year. And then we'll kind of start the process all over again. That's all I have. Um, I'll stop there and see if people have questions.
Any questions on the LCAP?
I have just a comment that I think this is, Raquel, I really do credit you for this and every member of the task force or the committee, I guess, that, that's been working so diligently over the past year. I will say in prior times, um, the LCAP I felt was much more of a document. We looked at once a year and kind of like, oh wow, look at this big document and put a rubber stamp on it and move to the next year. Whereas I do believe to your point, we've been, this does not look, um, brand new at all to me because I feel like we've been hearing about it, you know, over the board meetings. And I credit the, um, the committee to really dig into these goals. I don't, I just find it so much more nuanced, I guess the best way of saying it, um, than, you know, again, prior times. I think that this is, it's a, it's a trivia, I think to all of the work. And I love, I think the way that you laid out the four goals and then the, um, sub-goals within that. And I look forward to seeing, I guess, the site plans or how those are going to be carried out at the next level, um, at the site. So I, I really think this is an amazing piece of work. Thank you. And I know, I think David and Annie said.
Yeah, it was, it was great to see it so much ever go into it and it, it come alive because it can be a super useful document or a entirely useless document. I'm glad we've been able to put it to good use this year. So we're open for public hearing?
Well, we should do the next presentation because we're still on presentations and then we'll go to the public hearing.
Okay, great. So moving on to the, uh, presentation of, on the budget work and then we'll go to the public here.
Okay. So, um, some may notice Kirsten Starziak, our chief business official. She is not here and that is because she's out ill. She worked tirelessly to get this budget ready for tonight. So I'm super bummed she's not here to be able to present it to folks. So you'll have to bear with me because I'm going to do my very best. This is very high level presentation. I'm not a chief business official by background. But Kirsten does a great job of explaining stuff, I would say, to me, the finances. And so I'll walk us through this and just highlight specific areas. What you have in your packet, um, and that was attached to the board agenda is, uh, the narrative that Kirsten prepared. And information related to the requirement on the public hearing that, that we are required to submit to our board and then the subsequent meeting, it can happen either through a special board meeting or it could happen through a regular board meeting. And the plan is that the June 14th meeting to bring the, um, the budget forward for consideration and approval. And so inside the packet, you have, um, the narrative and some outlined information related to the assumptions and the multi-year projection as well as what our information related to the reserves. And so, um, I'll go through this quickly through this PowerPoint here that's in front of you. So I'm going to start with state budget status and takeaway. So last, yes, it was last Friday. We had the update from school services related to the state budget and kind of the takeaways. And these are the very level hot, these are very high level takeaways. So Prop 98 guarantee has risen. 8.3 billion since the governor's January budget. So totaling $102 billion. So because the revenues in the state have been so strong, that's been a real positive since the January, um, January budget proposal that came forward. The next piece I want to call out is the governor is really providing a relief related to the rising inflation that we're all experiencing. A focus on supporting public safety, just, you know, recognizing things are happening. We're getting ready for fire season. I think many are hearing that in the news. Um, addressing homelessness, um, transform. And I bolded for public education. So he continues to prioritize public education and, um, and then combat climate change. So these are areas that he's really, it's clear by where he's prioritizing funding that public education is one of the top for him. So what does this mean for us in education? So we're excited to hear that there's going to be a discretionary block grant that we're going to receive. We do not yet know the amount that we're going to receive. What we know, what we understand is it may be an amount per, per pupil that we would receive similar to educator effectiveness money. The nice thing about the discretionary block grant is that it is not going to come with ties like our COVID relief funds where we had restrictions on how we could utilize that. And it's not going to come with a timeline. So we are going to have time to be able to spend it. It, it will, um, will not have to do any specialized reporting for it, but, um, we're looking forward to be able to get that, that bump of funding. And it was, you know, based on what school services was sharing, it was really the feedback that, um, the governor heard from the field. That it was just too much with all of these ties to all of the various fundings. And so, um, the thing that I feel really positive about is that when you look at the, what, how the legislative legislature is responding with the governor's budget. The state, the Senate and the assembly are both talking about offering discretionary block grant money. Which when you have all three pot bodies wanting to do that, then you pretty much know it's, it's a, it's going to happen. It's just figuring out how it's going to happen. I want to say it's the Senate that wants to do it more like annually, not a one-time funding where, um, the governor is saying this is a one-time funding piece. So we shall see. We won't know that until the end of June, once the budget is adopted. We are also anticipating deferred maintenance funds for schools. We have not received deferred maintenance funds. I don't even remember the last time we've received deferred maintenance funds. So it's very exciting, but it's going to be offset. So it sounds good. But what's interesting about it is let's just pretend we get a hundred thousand for the discretionary block grant. And they identify 50,000 for deferred maintenance for Kent Field School District. We then are, are discretionary block grant is lessened by that deferred maintenance. So it's, it's really coupled. So it's, it's really coupled. Does that make sense? So you get 50 for the discretionary block grant and 50 for the deferred maintenance. That's how I understand it. No increased pension relief, right? So, but we are getting this other, other little bump. And then the COLA did increase from the January, the January budget to six point five six COLA. The unfortunate piece of that doesn't impact the Kentfield School District because we are a community funded district. So that doesn't necessarily mean anything for us, but just an acknowledgement that it did get raised. So that's our, those are our big takeaways from this state budget. In terms of our budget, I tried to do the pie chart that I think our board is used to seeing and that's in percentages. But I also did estimated revenues outlined there on the left-hand side. So this is what we are proposing for our budget revenues that should say 22, 23. So I'll edit that before it's posted, but you can see there about 12 million for property tax, LCFF, parcel tax, 5.14. Federal 617,000, other state 411, local 205, special ed 823. 823,000, not million, and kick 1 million. So a total revenue of about 20 million, right? So that's what we're, as I mentioned. And so, so 20 million budget is what we're anticipating. In terms of our expenditures, we're around the same in what we're budgeting. Obviously, that's what we want to do. We want to have a balanced budget. So certificated 8.8 million, classified 2.35 benefits, 5.76. Books and supplies, close to a million dollars that we're setting aside for that. Services, 1.95, close to two other out go about 679. Again, that should be a million. Thousand. So again, 20 million, maintaining a balanced budget there. So the big thing we want to look at really is around where we're ending this school year and how we're looking into the next school year. So our beginning fund balance that we're anticipating is about 1.9, 1.9 million. Our projected revenues and our projected expenditures balance out. And so you can see the net increase decrease about a little over 5,000. And so then when you go down the list, what you want to see is what are we holding our state mandated reserve at 3%? So we have, this has to all circle back to that beginning fund balance piece, right? So we're taking that, the more we have there, the more we can have related to our reserve. So our state mandated reserve at 3% is about 617,000. The district designated reserves, our board policy requires that we hold that 2%. And so we have about 411,000 that we can set aside for that. We've increased the special ed contingency attack, so to 150,000. And then there's that 764,000. So that's undesignated reserve. So that what that does is it increases our reserve because we want our reserve to be higher than what that three and that two are. Because one is they're both required because we've set those, the board has set those and the state has set it. And so you can see here when you come down that 1.943, our, it puts us at a reserve at about a 9.52, which is, which is strong. It could be better. We want to get ourselves to a double digit reserve. As I mentioned before, this budget that's coming forward to you, we have, it's my understanding, we have two FTE built in there for increased enrollment. So we're giving ourselves some more room. We do not have the discretionary block grant built into this budget. Because we don't know the exact amount just yet, but that's why I mentioned earlier, when I mentioned the LCAP. That I'm anticipating a 45 day revision for the budget that will come forward. Because it's going to be whatever that discretionary block grant is, we're going to have to build it into our budget. So, um, so this has us sitting pretty strong. Just to call out though, school services, I'm sorry, FICMAT Fiscal Crisis Management. Team, they, they recommend that community funded districts hold a 17 to 20% reserve. And there are districts in this county that are holding reserves that high that are community funded. We are one of the few counties with so many community funded districts. But with that said, um, you know, this district hasn't always held a high reserve. To what, what I've seen is more around the five and six, but we're trying to move that up there. Because we want to have ourselves as strong as possible. So. That's our summary, I think that was, oh. And then this I wanted to highlight too, this is also, I believe, attached to the narrative and it's very small there and that's purposeful. I just did a screenshot of the multi-year. And so what you can see here are the projected estimated reserves. So for 21, 22, um, how, and this year will be about a 10% reserve and then 22, 23, 9.52%. And then 23, 24, 8.45, and then 24, 25, 7.6. So we did do some increasing in. Enrollment because of TK, because we see that growing. And then as I mentioned, we've built in some additional FTE. The other piece that's in here, that's a significant cost for us that we really don't know what's going to happen is the food for all program. So we have budgeted about 470, let's just say, 470,000. We've doubled how many kids were anticipating to receive that service, but we just really don't know. We really don't know. We don't want to under budget. We also don't want to over budget too much, but, but that's where we're sitting right now. So, um, we also don't have in here any increases related to staff other than step and column. So we have to take that all into account as we're speaking about negotiations. So what's next? We need to settle with KTA and KESPA. So we are still in the process of negotiations as our union groups. We have a meeting on Thursday with both groups and so hopefully we'll be able to, to kind of close those out. With KESPA, it was a pretty long process because we, we developed our first contract. And then with KTA, I think overall it's been a pretty positive process. We did not have a whole bunch of articles that were opened, but, but we're working through that now. The board will consider the budget for adoption due 14th. Kirsten will come back and provide more clarification if there's questions the board have. Again, I apologize, I was going off a couple of little bit, but. And then this, the final state budget adoption, June 30th. And as I mentioned before, August, September, I would anticipate a 45 day budget revision. We heard that straight from the county. Typically at this time, we have what's called the common message that would come from the county office. We'd have the DART board, which tells you kind of where to project for. Property taxes and such. We don't have any of that information right now. So, so moving forward accordingly, but just to know that. So with that, I will see if there's questions.
Question. Thank you for preparing that. And this doesn't have to be answered now because I know that you're on your own here. So the close to $1 million on books and supplies, is that, doesn't have to be answered right now, is that typical? That's one question that I have. It doesn't, it doesn't like seem like it is to me from what I remember in the passport, but I don't know, I could be off. I don't know of any new, if we've had that in new adoption years, but I don't know of any like new adoptions. And if there is, maybe we just haven't heard about it. So I'd like to hear more specifics at a later time, just around that books and supplies. I also know that, you know, so many teachers create their own things now, you know, digitally and things like that. So there's not as much of like that, you know, weight on kind of the old model. So any more information on that budget item would be great.
Okay, I will just offer this clarification right now. Typically, whenever you're going to adopt a new curriculum, you want to have a year of piloting and you want to have a committee come together. And it's actually come up with our administrative team related to looking at our curriculums. We don't have any of those committees together right now, but I do anticipate that we'll be looking at curriculum specifically. So, so I can definitely get more information.
That's what I mean. The, the board has been through these pilots before and then we budgeted, you know, accordingly, because we were expecting a new adoption. But since we're not expecting a new adoption, because we're not highlighting anything, that number was not what I expected to see. So.
Okay. Other questions?
Okay, I do not mean this to be a zinger or a call at all. And this one could definitely be shelved for Kirsten. But I was just curious about, I did have that same question. About the books and supplies. And I went to like the Lucy Cockens maybe, based on everything I'm reading about Lucy Cockens, there's all this updated. So I don't know if that's influencing this as well, but I was, yeah, I was curious what's on the, in the pipeline. But then the second one is related to the secured property taxes percent growth on the assumptions, on the budget assumptions. And I was just curious why that was going down. You know, adopted, we have, is it 5.87%? And then projected is going down to 3% in 23, 24, and that 3% in 24, 25. And I was just curious why that assumption was taking place. And again, not to be answered tonight. Because I, you know, of course, we're thinking about property taxes related to, I mean, everything's showing that the trend is going upwards with home, you know, with home sales. So I'm just curious why that would go. And I'm sure there's a very rational reason.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Other questions?
Thank you for putting this presentation together.
I corrected those slides before we post, because we'll post this in the highlights.
Okay, it's very comprehensive. So you'll have also the, um, the, the summary too as well, the report.
Yeah, that's all, that's all part of the agenda now, but we can attach it.
Because it's great. It's a really nice summary.
It gives a good overview. Any questions from the crowd? I'm just jotting down the questions. Okay, and then, oh, I should see if Sarah has any questions.
Thanks.
Okay, so then we're ready to move on.
So are we at a, we're opening the public hearing on both of these topics? So looking, moving on to item A, opening public hearing on the LCAP. Do we call for approval on that or are we simply?
No, we just opened it like a public hearing.
So we're opening the opportunity for public comment on the LCAP that we've just heard more about. Is there any comments from the? People in house? Okay, so we're, any other discussion from the board? Closing the public hearing on the LCAP, opening the public hearing on the budget. On the budget items that we just heard presented, opportunity for a public comment or questions. Opportunity for more discussion from the board. And closing a public hearing on the budget. We heard about the reserves, so we're going to have an opportunity for public comment on reserves. Any comment from the community on reserves? A further comment from the board or discussion?
I like that you put in the narrative on the background. I think it's really important for this one. The, the description. Especially because it relates to the case he's striving to increase our end of reserve, the mention of that.
Any other comments on reserves? And closing the public hearing on reserves. Moving on to the discussion action agenda. Item one A, consider the approval of the inter-district transfer request from Larchport to Madera School District into Kentfield School District. For 22, 23 school year, this is a seventh grade student. Looking for a motion. On this specific item. And looking for a second.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
So I'm just going to take the board back for a little reminder about the situation. So this is a student that's been with the Kentfield School District since kindergarten. And the family moved out of the district's residency boundaries last school year, came forward with an inter-district transfer request. And it was denied by this board and then it moved forward to the county board of education. They look at any inter-district transfers that have been denied and to. Call action on those. And so that was last summer. They heard the case and overturned this board's decision. And approved the, the transfer for the student to stay one year and one year only. And that the family should. Get residency within the district. And, and so that's where it's at. And it came to the last board meeting, the board decided to table it to give it a little bit of time. For board members to look at the packet again. And we're here tonight for your review and consideration.
And I will remind, remind this board that it has been practice of this board to not approve these kinds of inter-district transfers into the district. That has been our past practice. But I, I do appreciate the fact that, and I know everyone has had a chat, he has to review this particular packet. And we'd want to open it up to discussion and then we can have a vote.
So, um, one of the things that came up, which we didn't have time to dig into was that this would go sort of taking another look. Come up at other board meetings as well as taking another look at how we. Are, are stance on inter-district transfers. And so that would be something that would go to the policy committee moving forward. Which didn't have a chance to meet between last meeting to now. And so I know that there's interest in kind of opening this back up in the policy committee. For future requests that's come forward. And perhaps instead of just sort of saying that we're going to, you know, go with a certain precedent of having more fleshed out criteria. So that we don't feel as a board that we're kind of haphazardly like, you know, in one case proving one and another. So I know there's interest for me and from others to flesh that out more. So perhaps it would be around like years in the district or, you know, other criteria that a family brings forward in a certain situation. So I know we don't have that yet and I know that it's been past precedent that we don't approve it. My vote tonight is going to be to approve it because I feel that the circumstances that were presented to us. Are still present. And when the county appealed our decision. They made that appeal based on the circumstances that the family presented. And I believe those circumstances are still at play. So for that reason, it would be my vote to approve it and then push for the policy committee to. Open this up so that we have a more articulated criteria moving forward.
Any other discussion of this topic before we vote?
David, this is Sarah. Can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you, Sarah.
Great, thank you. So I just want to follow up on some things that Davina just said, because I think it's important for people to hear them. One is I don't think our policy is haphazard. It has always been to allow a student to finish an existing school year. And to not extend past that school year if they're no longer in the residence of the district. In terms of the policy, while I think there is interest in opening it up, I would just note that we are also under. Pressure to both increase compensation to teachers and pressure from the community to keep class sizes low. And adding additional students creates difficulty in those areas. So I, I have empathy for this family and for other families that make this request. But we have an obligation to our collective community and students. And so I just wanted to point out, but it, it's not been haphazard how we've handled it. And certainly it's worth a fresh look, but it, it's based on a variety of factors, including the wellbeing of all the students and the staff in the district.
Okay, Heather, did you want to add anything?
No, I, I, I very, I value these perspectives. Um, thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Davina. I am also quite conflicted about this case. And I just, but I've, in my nine years that I've served, I, we have been, to Sarah's point, unweavering in our application of. How we handle. These kind of requests and they've been very difficult in the past. We've had some really, really tough situations. And I do worry about the consistency, but I wonder out loud is, could we, do we have to take action tonight on this? Or is that a possibility that we wait until a policy committee would meet about it or is that out of the realm of possibility, just bringing it up?
I, I think the board should take act, I would recommend the board take action tonight. I don't, I think if we are going to change a board policy. We have to find time for the committee to meet, then it has to come to a board meeting for first reading and then a second reading. And the child would be starting school in August. And so we would have to make a decision tonight. I would recommend that.
So we have, I had the opportunity to review this since the last meeting. I'll now call it for a vote. Remember, this is considering the approval of an inter-district transfer from Larchport to Madera into the Kentfield School District for 22, 20, 23. All those in favor of approving that inter-district transfer? Davina? And all those opposed?
Yay. Yay.
So the, the mission, the. Approval is, is denied. On item B, consider the approval of the inter-district transfer request from Kentfield School District to the Ross Valley School District for 22, 23 school dis. Pre-school year. Their material are in your packet. This is an inter-district transfer request out of the school district. Calling for a motion to approve.
So moved.
And looking for a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? The. Inter-district transfer out of the district is approved. Action to review the California School Board Association CSBA revision of board policy 1312.3. You know, for complete procedure for a second and final reading. We're going to be going through a number of these. These are all, I'll remind people. A. Adoption of language changes, largely non-material language changes suggested by the California School Board Association. So we'll be going through these policies now. We will go through them one at a time. On the. Item C, looking for a motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second. And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
You have to do a roll call vote.
Okay.
So I'll call out.
Okay.
Trustee Bullwasser. For trustee Sue. Trustee Riddle.
Approved.
Trustee Killingsworth.
Aye.
Trustee McFellshreed. Aye.
On the, so the, the change is adopted as written. On item D, uh, the action to review the California CSBA revision of administrative regulation 13, 12.3, you know, for complaint procedure for second and final reading. Looking for a motion?
So moved.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Trustee Bullwasser. Aye. Trustee Sue. Aye. Trustee Riddle.
Aye.
Trustee Killingsworth.
Aye.
Trustee McFellshreed. Aye.
So the adjustment is accepted as written. On item E, a review of the CSBA revision of administrative regulation 13, 12.4, community relations for second and final reading, looking for a motion?
So moved.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Trustee Bullwasser. Aye. Trustee Sue. Aye. Trustee Riddle.
Aye.
Trustee Killingsworth.
Aye.
Trustee McFellshreed. Aye.
The adjustment is accepted as written. Item F, review the CSBA revision of administrative regulation 33, 11, bids for a second and final reading, looking for a motion?
So moved.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Trustee Bullwasser. Aye. Trustee Sue. Aye. Trustee Riddle.
Aye.
Trustee Killingsworth.
Aye.
Trustee McFellshreed. Aye.
The adjustment is accepted as written. Item G, revering, reviewing the CSBA revision of board policy 35, 16, emergencies and disaster preparedness for a second and final reading, looking for a motion?
So moved.
Looking for a second?
Second.
A roll call, a discussion? Roll call?
Trustee Bullwasser. Aye. Trustee Sue. Aye. Trustee Riddle.
Aye.
Trustee Killingsworth.
Aye.
Trustee McFellshreed. Aye.
The adjustment is accepted as written. Item H, review CSBA revision of board policy 35, 41.2, transportation for students with disabilities for a second and final reading, looking for a motion?
So moved.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Trustee Bullwasser. Aye. Trustee Sue. Aye. Trustee Riddle.
Aye.
Trustee Killingsworth.
Aye.
Trustee McFellshreed. Aye.
Uh, the adjustment is accepted as written. Item I, reviewing CSBA revision of board policy 40, 20, drug and alcohol free workplace for a second and final reading, looking for a motion?
So moved.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Trustee Bullwasser. Aye. Trustee Sue. Aye. Trustee Riddle.
Aye.
Trustee Killingsworth.
Aye.
Trustee McFellshreed. Aye.
The adjustment is accepted as written. Item J, review CSBA revision of board policy 40, 30, non-discrimination in employment for a second and final reading, looking for a motion?
So moved.
Looking for a second?
Okay.
Any discussion? A roll call vote?
Trustee Bullwasser. Aye. Trustee Sue. Aye. Trustee Riddle.
Yes.
Trustee Killingsworth.
Aye.
Trustee McFellshreed. Aye.
Uh, the, the adjustment is accepted as written. Item K, reviewing CSBA revision of administrative regulation 40, 30, non-discrimination in employment for second and final reading, looking for a motion?
So moved.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? A roll call vote?
Trustee Bullwasser.
There's just a note, there's some typos on the stage, but I return back to.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Trustee Sue. Aye. Trustee Riddle.
Aye.
Trustee Killingsworth.
Aye.
Trustee McFellshreed. Aye.
The, uh, adjustment is accepted as written. Item L, a review CSBA revision of administrative regulation 41, 12.23, special education staff, second and final reading, looking for a motion?
So moved.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Trustee Bullwasser. Aye. Trustee Sue. Aye. Trustee Riddle.
Aye.
Trustee Killingsworth.
Aye.
Trustee McFellshreed. Aye.
The adjustment is accepted as written. Uh, item M, review CSBA revision of board policy 41, 15, evaluation supervision, second and final reading, looking for a motion?
So moved.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Trustee Bullwasser. Aye. Trustee Sue. Aye. Trustee Riddle.
Aye.
Trustee Killingsworth.
Aye.
Trustee McFellshreed. Aye.
Uh, the adjustment is accepted as written. Uh, item N, review the CSBA administrative regulation, uh, KSD AR 4115, evaluation supervision for a second and final reading, looking for a motion?
So moved.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Trustee Bullwasser. Aye. Trustee Sue. Aye. Trustee Riddle.
Aye.
Trustee Killingsworth.
Aye.
Trustee McFellshreed. Aye.
The adjustment is accepted as written. Thank you for your patience with that. It's an important part of what we do is adopting these adjustments. We are grateful to be part of the CSBA for suggesting the updated language on these, and we'll make sure to highlight any material changes. And thank you to the policy committee for a lot of work on this. Thank you.
And I just want to make a note, so we had checked in with legal counsel related to our process. And so because this wasn't on the consent agenda, we couldn't just do a full sweep approval on it. So that's why we had to do the roll call. Our legal counsel is going to review our board policy around adopting policies, and if we have to continue to do it in the way in which we did.
Okay.
So you may see a change moving forward, so just wanted to get that.
Thank you.
Great.
Are there people who want to excuse at this point before we go through the rest, back half of our meeting?
I think that's it.
Okay, well, we do have to do our governance and our pertinent states.
Thank you. Grant's gonna stay for closed session, but
Okay.
We're gonna probably be in here. Sure.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Governance, item P, section one, board meeting highlights? Obviously the recognition, you know, the
It was very sweet.
It was very
It was really nice.
Yes. Thank you. And it highlights so much of what we value about our staff is this, this incredible longevity and that collaboration and the friendship that's so clear when you have things like that. So
I liked how you noticed the 200 years.
Yeah.
I know, that was nice.
And I think the having, looking forward to all the end of the year celebrations is an important reminder. Anything else that we need to think about for highlights?
Do we have to put the, um, the open, start hearings? Does that need to be in there?
Yeah. Yeah, we just, we'll make note that we did, and then as I'm always doing now is the, um, the reports will be attached. And
And the narratives, I really think those are
Yeah.
Even like the narratives, like the one, the introduction, the interesting they're doing for them are great. Those are really
Yeah, I know that's a lot of work, and it really does help things go much better. Thank you.
It does, yes.
Uh, so those are the three LCAP recognitions and end of year?
Yep.
Is that good?
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, future agenda items, we talked, um, Davina, a little bit about that, perhaps thinking about IDT and what we do there?
Well, is ID, will that go to policy though, or for, for here?
We should look through our policy book. I don't think there's a policy.
On IDT? Oh, there should be a policy. Yeah, we'll look.
Okay.
Let's check the language. The board reviews it, but what I was proposing was
Yes, I agree.
Maybe a consideration.
Sorry, I didn't mean to say there was no policy, but it's not fleshed out.
Right.
Right.
A criteria.
But I think what you're saying is the historical precedence, that's how we tend to refer to these.
Right, right, right.
Right. And, and that's why I'm saying that
Yeah.
From having sat through all of them.
Yes.
In my learnings, I feel like there, yeah, it might be helpful to say that we have a precedent, and then in certain situations, we look at a little matrix.
Yeah, yeah.
That we look at some data points on a matrix, and then the board can consider that if we choose.
Yeah.
We have a lot on June 14th. I think it's probably going to come up at some other
Yeah.
future point at this stage, um, but we'll take it under consideration for agenda planning, and we'll make sure to get it all.
Yeah, so for the June meeting, we have a lot of like real basic, not basic, but just like annual things such as, you know, signing on behalf of the board. Like those basics and things that come forward. But, um, we also have the grand jury report that will need to come forward for the June meeting. We have the UTK plan that will come forward, but you and I had big plans to have it in May, but it didn't happen.
The food plan?
The food, so, um, and as I've mentioned before, we had one person propose, but we want to do our due diligence on reviewing.
Of course.
Um, and so there's some follow-up that Kirsten was doing, but we'd anticipate that to come forward then too. And then, um, uh, I think that's budget and
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a lot, a lot to review and adopt for that, so.
So this wouldn't be for June, but maybe to put note for the agenda team, um, such great work was happening with the, um, social justice work and around the articulation, and the whole board hasn't heard about it. But I had the opportunity on the equity, um, board committee to, and, and I think just basically the work of the year of the direction that the equity committee, and I don't know if there's other committees that we might want to start off next year, understanding sort of the work that happened this year, because it might just feel like there's way too much for June and people sort of burnout thing, but, um, but a lot of work was done in that arena, and that also relates to, you know, funds that we've put aside for, as a board, for professional development. And, um, we put a lot of money towards that summer planning work last year, um, but we never looked back with the board to hear about. I mean, I got the opportunity to in that committee, but the rest of the board, I think, should really hear about, um, kind of what's happening with that articulation and
Yeah. I think you also mentioned the community liaison.
Yeah. Community liaison is a really big one, but the, um, your point too, and that touches on that goal number four that I mentioned about the LCAP, and that's in there specifically the K8, we're gonna profile. Justice work. So I think that's a well-taken, something that we should launch the year.
Yeah.
And the community liaison, given that we're focused on goal four.
Yes.
That's right.
A good opportunity to have
Yeah.
a review of how that's
Yeah.
On the IDT, one other area I'd be curious about, not only just looking at our own policy, but just at a, as a county level, what's happening on that, that landscape? I'm just curious.
It's the, so I had the opportunity to speak with, um, a colleague last week, um, that's dealing with IDTs. And so what, um, they had previously accepted IDTs, their school district had previously accepted IDTs, but is now in this mediation related to, um, asking the school district that the child's resident of to be funding the money that they get funded for that child to that school district that they transfer to.
Oh, wow.
And it's a pretty contentious situation, but, um, typical practice has not been that people would approve the IDTs. I know Mill Valley, they don't for certain, um, because they don't want to increase their enrollment, and they don't even accept parent IDTs work, uh, sorry.
Staff.
Staff.
I know, that's why I say, I think all this stuff is, I know it's really nuanced in terms of, but I also know that there are other districts that are actively trying to
Those are districts that are LCFF. So Ross Valley School District will typically approve, um, the San Rafael Elementary School District will typically approve, and the Nevada School District will typically approve. Those are all districts that are funded based on ADA. San Rafael High School District doesn't approve them because they're not funded in that manner. And so, uh, anyways, but yeah, I can pull some data on that, that, that could be part of
Perhaps, where we have that on the agenda.
I have a question. Um, I didn't want to, you know, um, bring that, there was just so much, um, on, on the plate in terms of the end of the year shareouts, but is the board gonna learn like kind of what happened with seven plus and what the data showed this year? Like, I mean, I think that we're interested in sort of understanding the math program more and understanding like how many sections will there be next year? For that, is it the same as this year, last year? So, I don't know, it's been a hot topic that has been brought to us about math, and so it would be great to know. I also know that we've talked about, um, how we're in terms of differentiation, like how we're supporting all students, um, and also students that are, um, you know, achieving like beyond grade level standard. And so I think that would also be a good opportunity to dig into that, because it hasn't, we haven't focused on that as much as a board, even though we've gotten feedback that that's an area, um, I think of growth for us as a district too, to be more like articulating what we're doing for students that are like meeting that standard and are not on the intervention side, but on the how we're challenging um, and pushing forward, um, students that are ready for that challenge. So maybe in that larger context, um, we could hear about that, um, and kind of get those data points, because that's a data stream that, um, I know I'd like to see from the board.
Okay, I know, I think that I'm just writing this down. I wonder if the math piece and we, right now, we're, uh, working on, you'll have it for the next meeting, kind of the proposed dates for next school year, and so Ed's showcase, maybe that can be one of the things that if we start off the year with the math department, so that they can provide some of that data. I'm just trying to think of ways to combine the two to do here from, from staff.
And we've always had very productive presentations from that department.
Yeah, they have a new member. I think there's a lot of
Yeah.
We just, we're seeing receipts with other staffing.
Yeah, it'd be good.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, and then staffing.
Yeah.
I forgot when you said that would be announced, what all of the staffing will look like at both sites, like with grade levels, the teachers, and when we introduce that to
Yeah, I was hoping that we would, I was hoping we would do it either right before Memorial Day or right after Memorial Day weekend. There's contract language specifically around Kent, and I want to do them both at the same time, for the middle school assignment, so I want to talk with Grant about that. So, but it'll definitely, in the next, like 10 days, I would think that we would be announcing it. I mean, a lot is out there already, but I think there's some formal announcement that has to be out there. But just based on feedback that's been received over the last, uh, really at the beginning of this school year, because it was a more typical year, there's certain things that I want to be sure we prep for for back to school. And one of those is at the end of the year, being sure people know who's teaching what grade levels.
Yeah.
Uh, anything else on future agenda items? Okay.
I'm sorry, can we go back to the board highlights or three things, public hearings to that information, the end of year celebrations? Oh, and then it was a recognition.
Just the breadth and depth of that. Recognition.
Okay.
Thank you. Pertinent dates?
Can you pass this down to, I'll just the tables on that?
Pertinent dates?
So you heard Grant mention all those concerts, um, you all should have received calendar invites for the, um, promotion and graduation. Our next board meeting is on the 14th, uh, 5:00 PM for regular session. A fourth grade promotion, note that's an earlier start. So this is a, it's back to the time, I guess they typically started around that time, and so for whatever reason, it got set later last year and then maybe the prior year. I want to double check on the D-LAC. I don't know that we were planning to have another D-LAC meeting.
There is.
There is, okay. So It's a very busy week.
What's happening for that D-LAC meeting? Was there something planned?
I'm meeting with Amber tomorrow, so I can ask her and follow up with you guys.
Yeah.
I sort of wondered if that might be one that they might want to touch.
Yeah, unless there was something, an agenda item, because I feel like they did a lot of the like, it felt like a closure meeting to me. I know that you were on Zoom.
It was all that end of year stuff.
Exactly. It felt like the last meeting.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll email you guys tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry.
All right, anything else on pertinent dates?
You know, I just remembered, um, maybe it's later in the summer when we need to sign ourselves to all the back to school event, just to make sure there's at least one.
Yeah.
I was wondering that too. And the, and the next board meeting.
That's right.
I feel like that might have been June.
Just we look at Yeah, we'll have it, that'll be with all the calendar stuff.
Okay.
In June.
Okay, so let's make sure to remember to
I'll send tentative stuff, because we actually have it all prepped.[1752.28]